Good evening and welcome to the April 29th, 2024 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. Established by state law, the commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents appointed to four-year terms by the city council. The Planning Commission is not a policy-setting body, that is the city council. The Planning Commission is a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance, which can be found on the city's website. The commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, variance, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews, and below-market-rate housing agreements associated with those projects. We work closely with staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for coordinating enforcement of the zoning ordinance and related policies. Thank you for joining this evening. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or member of the public. There will be an opportunity to speak publicly during general public comment, as well as for each agenda item. This meeting is called to order, and we will go to the roll call. Commissioner Barnes?
Present.
Commissioner Eric?
Present.
Commissioner Farrick?
Here.
Commissioner Riggs?
Present.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Present.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Present.
I am Chair Doe, I am also present. And so that takes us to reports and announcements. And before I turn it over to Mr. Perata, we just wanted to express appreciation for Commissioner Barnes and Riggs, your service on the Planning Commission. And I know that I am not alone in learning from the perspective that both of you have brought to the discussion for the time I have spent on the commission, my brief time so far, and for many years before that. So, thank you. Anyone else wants to make a brief statement? Vice Chair Schindler?
Thank you, Chair Doe. I would also very much like to thank Commissioner Riggs and Commissioner Barnes for their extensive years of service for the city, and personally for them modeling how to be thoughtful and constructive planning commissioners. I have learned a lot by working with you for the last year and a half. Commissioner Barnes, I will especially miss your focus on ensuring the commission keeps a consistent, a good level of consistency in our decision-making, and your focus on ensuring community resources, like sports fields, that play a big role in development discussions. Commissioner Riggs, I will especially miss your attention to the nuances of architectural details in buildings, especially the larger buildings, and the way that you have provided longer-term, multi-year, and sometimes even multi-decade contexts for the projects that we've discussed during my tenure. So, thank you both very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. Commissioner Farrick?
Thank you. Not to just continue to pile on, but I will. I was able to serve two terms on the Planning Commission several years ago, and overlapped with both of you for some amount of time during that time, and I learned a lot then, and again now. And so it's wonderful that, you know, you've continued to serve the city this long, and I've learned a ton, you know, at the risk of repetition, architectural details, kind of sticking with our mission and focus and, you know, the community mindset. And I also just want to thank you both for your civility. We don't always disagree, but I do think we are able to be quite functional as a commission because we're able to disagree but do so in a very civil way, knowing that we all have the best interests of the community at heart. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. Commissioner Eric?
I would also like to say my thanks. This is my one-year anniversary of being on the Planning Commission, so I got to learn from both of you for exactly one year. And my reflection is it's hard, because of the Brown Act, that we can't discuss things outside, but somehow, due to the way you comport yourselves on the commission, to the attitude you bring to each and every discussion, I have understood a great deal about being a planning commissioner by listening to both of you every other week. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. Anyone else? Thank you both so much. So, I'll turn it to Mr. Perata for other updates, reports, and announcements.
Yes, thank you, Chair Doe. So, from the staff perspective, we'd also like to thank Commissioners Barnes and Riggs for your eight years of service in these back-to-back terms. I know Commissioner Riggs served previously as well, so thank you as well for the previous service to the community. It is a great asset, we really do appreciate it. With that, from a staff perspective, one update for the commission. So, at the last meeting, the commission reviewed the 1220 Hoover Street project. That project was appealed to the city council, so the commission's decision will be reviewed by the city council at a future date alongside the recommendation for the tentative map. So, stay tuned for updates there, but just wanted to let the commission know that staff did receive an appeal of the commission's approval of the use permit and architectural control and BMR agreement for that eight-unit project. And that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to answer any other questions.
Through the chair, can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
Was that appeal through the applicant, or through, was it to contest the approval, or was it to contest some of the conditions that we applied to the approval itself?
Yeah, appeal from a resident, not the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. Any other questions for Mr. Perata? No? Okay. D, public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. I will turn to our clerk this evening, Ms. Beegan, to explain how members of the public can participate.
Thank you, Chair Doe. Regarding procedures for communicating, for those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we kindly ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling in to tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify that you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commenter during this period, please inform staff at the start of your public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you have finished your comment. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. With that said, I hand it back to you, Chair Doe.
Great. And actually, I'm going to hand it back to you to open public comment.
Thanks, Chair Doe. So, under public comment, each speaker may address the Planning Commission once for a limit of three minutes. You're not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. If you are participating via Zoom, please press star nine. So, at this time, I can begin the public comment period if you'd like, Chair Doe.
Yes, please.
So, as of right now, I do not see any hands raised, and I have not received any comments cards.
We'll give it a moment. And how about now? Does anybody wish to make a public comment?
Thank you, Chair Doe. At this time, I do not see any hands raised, so I can confirm that, you know, public comments have been submitted.
Great, thank you. We'll close public comment. And under E, consent calendar, there are no items on the consent calendar. That brings us to our F, public hearing portion of our meeting. F1, a use permit for 219 Durham Street. Consider and adopt a use permit to demolish an existing single-story, single-family residence and detached accessory building, and construct a new two-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1U, Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. Determine this action is categorically exempt under CEQA guidelines, Section 15303's Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. The proposed project includes an attached accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. Mr. Hochleitner, any updates for our presentation?
Good evening, Chair Doe. Commissioners, I have no additional items to add. The project architect is here, along with the property owner. The architect would like to give a brief verbal presentation before questions.
Great, thank you.
Is this on?
Uh-uh.
That's okay. You can hear me, right?
Uh...
Okay. That's okay. You can hear me?
Maybe just one second.
Okay. Much better, thank you.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Janice Chu, architect with 360 Design Studio. The homeowner, Mr. Batia, is also joining us here today. Since last June, we have been working closely with the city and our clients to develop a high-quality design that integrates well into the surrounding neighborhoods. The current house is a one-story house with limited space for a family of four. Our client's goal is to increase and improve the quality of living space for his family and provide an ADU for in-law visits. We therefore propose a new two-story, single-family residence with an attached ADU. In terms of the design itself, we are proposing rich textures and materials, an inviting front cover porch, and lots of beautiful landscaping throughout. We have broken the volume between the first and second floors by introducing horizontal roof eaves. For the second story volume, we have introduced a hip roof that breaks the mass and allows the building to maintain an appropriate scale. The exterior materials will be smooth painted cement, plaster, horizontal architectural control joints, stone tile veneer, dark gray window and door trims. The overall color palette is neutral with warm tones, and should blend well with the surrounding neighborhoods. In terms of the neighborhood outreach, the owner has reached out to eight neighbors by sending a letter and a drawing package through emails. The owner has also responded to neighbors who has questions. We have received four neighbors who showed generous support through email correspondence. Based on our understanding, there are no objections. We are confident that this house will add value to the neighborhood and serve as a significant upgrade from the current structures. We are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Any clarifying questions to staff or the applicant before public comment? Vice Chair Schindler?
Thank you, Chair Doe. I wanted to be clear on the sequencing of reviews, a question to staff, I think, about the potential for the outstanding potential for appeal of the tree decision, and how that relates to our decisions here tonight. So, to try and put a crisper spin on that. If the project moves forward, following tonight's Planning Commission meeting, and the heritage tree removal is appealed to city council, which decisions will be put in front of council? Will it be just the tree or the entire project? And then if council decided to prevent the heritage tree removal, what comes back to Planning Commission, if anything?
So, if it is, somebody will, anybody will have the opportunity to appeal the heritage tree removal permit. So, if it's just the tree, then just the tree will come back. If it's the whole project itself, so they could either choose just the tree or the entire project, that they could appeal to the city council.
And is there any scenario in which, so if only the tree decision were reviewed by council, would it come back to Planning Commission?
So, just for a point of clarification, only the appellant in the original appeal for the heritage tree removal can appeal the tree itself. Anybody from the public could appeal the entire project. If it does go to city council, if it is appealed, and the tree is appealed, and it goes to city council, it could potentially come back to Planning Commission because they would have to revise their plans accordingly to save the tree.
Thank you, that's a helpful clarification. And can you remind me what the time window is for the appellate? Is it 15 days following this meeting, or 15 days following the EQC meeting?
So, any appeal must be filed within 15 days of the Planning Commission's decision. So, if they want to appeal just the tree or the project, the appellant can appeal the tree within 15 days, or any member of the public can appeal the project within 15 days.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarifications and all of the, due to all of the intricacies and the multi-levels of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. Any other clear, excuse me, any other clarifying questions? If not, I think we'll go ahead and take public comment for this item. Ms. Beegan?
Thank you, Chair Doe. At this time, I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards, but we can give it a minute to see if any come in.
Yeah, we'll give it a moment. How about now?
I have not received any comment cards and do not see any hands raised.
Okay, great. I think we'll go ahead and close public comment, and bring it back to the commission for any further questions, discussion, and ultimately, a motion. Anyone? Commissioner Riggs?
Thank you. Yes, if I may, I have a question for Mr. Hochleitner. And this has to do with the privacy aspects from the large stairwell window. It seemed to me, referring to the survey and back to the second-floor plan, that the large stairwell window looks out pretty much directly onto the oak tree, but I did not ask for a site visit. So, I wondered if, when you made your site visit, if you were able to determine whether the oak tree provided screening.
Are you referring to the oak tree that's going to be removed, or the one that's staying?
No, I believe the one that is roughly in the middle, down the right-side property line, would be the one that would shield the stair, if I'm correct. I will note that the two buildings' side elevations were not labeled right, left, or east, west, so I had to do some interpreting.
The window that you're referring to for the stairs will generally be blocked by the remaining coast live oak. The applicant has already included in their landscape plans a number of pittusporum trees that will be planted along that side of the property as well, which will, at maturity, provide a fair amount of screening for that side of the property.
I dare say, depending on which specific pittusporum is chosen, it will provide that screening very quickly. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Any other commissioners have thoughts or comments they would like to share? Or, well, sorry, I don't know if you were pressing your button again. I'll just briefly make a comment. Per the staff report, the home does fulfill all zoning regulations, and I do appreciate the communications with neighbors and the accommodations to privacy and other concerns that the applicant demonstrated. So, I can find staff's recommendation to approve the use permit supportable. I will just make a brief comment about the tree. Even though one of the heritage oak trees is being requested to be removed, I do appreciate that the larger and more mature of the oak trees is being preserved, and that the massing of the home steps in to create generous space in an outdoor deck centered around that larger heritage oak. And noticed that the prayer room on the second floor would look out onto the oak, in addition to the, I believe, the stair window. And of course, I understand there's always replacement trees that are required as part of the heritage tree removal permit, so I can find, I find this supportable, but don't let me stop that. Anyone from making a comment or a motion? Vice Chair Schindler?
I do just have a couple of brief comments. I wanted to just compliment the really thoughtful use of windows in this design, maximizing light, as well as considering privacy. I have to admit that I briefly was confused by what I'm assuming are under-cabinet windows in the kitchen, between the counter and the cabinet. I thought, damn, that's a good idea. So, again, there are a couple of other places where I was impressed by the creativity. I also wanted to compliment you on the use of the QR code and the self-addressed stamped envelopes, that's best practices that I've seen in my tenure here, and just in terms of outreach to neighbors, which is something this commission is very focused on and very much appreciates.
Thank you.
I do have a, just a question to staff, as it regards, as it relates to the maximum FAL and square footage here. The proposed development is exactly at the max limit. If it were one additional square foot, it would be over. This is the first time I've seen this. There's usually a cushion or a little bit of wiggle room. So, my question to staff is about a mechanism for verifying that that's, the plans and the actual square footage constructed are identical. And the reason that I'm asking the question is because during my time living in Menlo Park, I'm aware of two instances where the owner of a single-family home had reason to measure the size of a home they had purchased and were living in, and found it to be bigger than the development plans originally submitted, or were given to them by the prior owners. That's something I've personally experienced. And so, my question is, just thinking about people being in a similar scenario, what is the mechanism for ensuring, you could just remind us what the mechanism for ensuring that square footage developed is matched to square footage in plans?
So, after the Planning Commission makes their decision to either approve or deny, and they file their building permits, the Planning Division will have another opportunity to review the plans as they get, as they're developed, and they do all their civil sheets and what's required. So, there may be some slight changes that are made to the plans during that process, and we have, I wouldn't say a fair amount of latitude, but we have a little bit of latitude to continue refining the plans with the applicant, should there need to be some sort of changes that need to be made to accommodate structural or, you know, design changes that need to be made. The building inspectors will also have the set of plans that they will review onsite at various times during the construction process. And if there's anything that they need to make revisions to, the Planning Division will have an opportunity to look at those revisions as well. So, I, hopefully, there won't be any secret areas that are included in this, but we have a number of ways to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Thank you for laying out all of those details, I appreciate that. And if there were a need to revise, and for any structural reason, expand the square footage, I'm assuming it wouldn't need to come back. Would it need to come back to Planning Commission?
If it does not substantially conform to the plans that are approved, or should you approve the plans tonight, we will have them, revise them to meet the zoning requirements. They would need to shave it down in some sort of way.
Thank you. Those were all of my questions, Chair Doe. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. Commissioner Silverstein?
Yeah, I have met a point. I've kind of, I've made this comment question on other proposals in the past, and I guess this is my question for staff. You know, it's my understanding that the reason we're here today is because the lot width is 50 feet and not 65 feet, despite the fact that the lot is 40% deeper than it has to be as per our zoning requirements. If there's not an answer about this today, that's totally fine, but I would just wanted to kind of explore what mechanisms are available for us to not burden the community, the applicants, the architects, staff, the Planning Commission, for kind of nuances around this lot-size question, as opposed to actual kind of fundamental planning permitting questions.
So, I know this has come up a couple of times. Commissioner Riggs has also brought this up in terms of lots that are just barely underneath what the zoning requirements call for, and I believe his statement was that, you know, the rules had to be written somehow, and so we couldn't, you know, make every lot standard. But it would be something that the city council would have to take up to modify the zoning code to bring substandard lots into conformance. So, unless Mr. Perata has something else to add, I think that that's a point well-taken.
So, just by municipal code, if anything's less than any of the thresholds, it has to come through here? There's no kind of administrative, ministerial workaround?
Not in this instance, I'll jump in. I, to expand, there are situations where projects do not require a use permit, but new two-story construction on a substandard lot does require a use permit in every instance. There are scenarios, a single-story home on this lot would not require a use permit. It is a two-story aspect. So, there are ways that a project can go through a ministerial or building permit-only process versus a discretionary use permit. However, in this case, new two-story development, substandard lot, would be that trigger for discretionary review by the Planning Commission per the municipal code. And as Connor mentioned, you know, that is a policy decision for the council, not the Planning Commission tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, I would like to move that we adopt a resolution approving the use permit for the project in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. First, from Commissioner Riggs, would anyone, Vice Chair Schindler?
I'm happy to second.
And a second from Vice Chair Schindler. And a second from Vice Chair Schindler. So we'll go ahead and vote on the resolution to approve the use permit for this project. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That's seven yeses. The motion passes. Congratulations on, congratulations on your new home and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your time too, and thank you for all the comments. Thanks.
Right. The next two items, F2 and F3, will be opened and reviewed together, including public comment. We'll take public comment for those two items at the same time. And before I go any further, I'm going to turn it to Mr. Prada to clarify the procedures for both the community and the commission.
Yes, thank you, Chair Doe. So the two items this evening, F2 and F3, are related. They're separate, but as they were both sponsored by Meta or formerly Facebook, they are somewhat related. And so F2 focuses on the East and West campuses. There's a few nuances there. And then there's the Willow Village project. And so there's two resolutions in the staff report. Attachment A relates to the East and West campus and the campus expansion project DA. And the Willow Village is, the recommended resolution is in attachment B. So what we're asking from staff to the commission this evening is to open F2 and F3 together. So in a minute, I'll hand it back to Chair Doe to read the agenda title for F2, and then we'll move to F3. We have a slide for both, for the community. And following opening both, we'll do a concurrent public comment on all of the development agreements that are under review at the East, West, and Willow Village campuses. But there should be two motions. That's going to be staff's recommendation. So a recommendation from the commission on attachment A, which is a resolution, as I mentioned, for the East and West campuses, and then attachment B, which is the Willow Village DA and review. So hopefully that's helpful. With that, we'll put back on the screen the agenda text for F2 and hand it back to you, Chair Doe.
Great. Thank you. I'm just going to just check, make sure that's clear with everyone up here. Great. Ah, yes, this is, this is nice with the F2, Development Agreement Annual Review, Meta Platforms, One Hacker Way and One Meta Way. Consider and adopt a resolution to determine Meta has demonstrated good faith compliance with the terms of the development agreements for the 2021, 2022, and 2023 annual review periods for their East Campus, West Campus, and Meta Campus Expansion Projects. And F3, Development Agreement Annual Review, Peninsula Innovation Partners LLC for 1350 through 1390 Willow Road, 925 through 1098 Hamilton Avenue, and 1005 to 1275 Hamilton Court. Consider and adopt a resolution to determine Peninsula Innovation Partners has demonstrated good faith compliance with the terms of the development agreement for the 2023 annual review period for the Willow Village Mixed-Use Master Plan Project. I think I'm turning it back to you, Mr. Prada, for any presentation.
Yes, thank you, Chair Doe. So I have a few verbal remarks here. So as we mentioned earlier, there are two actions before the commission related to effectively three campuses. And so there's an attachment in the staff report that does identify the campuses for reference. The East Campus is the first of the Meta campuses in Menlo Park. That's at formerly 1601 Willow Road. It's now known as One Hacker Way. And then the West Campus, which actually has two development agreements and a development agreement amendment. And so that's for the West Campus, Building 20, the first building on the West Campus, and then the remainder, the campus expansion project, which includes Building 21, 22, and the almost complete, but open to the public now, Citizen M Hotel, as well as Building 23, a former project that was incorporated into the West Campus Expansion Project. And then most recently, in late 2022, the council adopted all land use entitlements and certified the EIR for the Willow Village Mixed-Use Master Plan. And that is generally at the intersection of Willow Road and Hamilton Avenue. And that's the 60-acre Mixed-Use Master Plan. And with that, the applicant is available for questions. And there are a number of applicant team members available online and a team member here in the chambers. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Chair Doe. Happy to answer any general questions, but I'll turn it over to the applicant for any, any statement as well first.
Great.
Good evening, Chair Doe and commissioners. My name is Eric Morley with Signature Development Group here for the Willow Village Development Agreement. We also have Juan Salazar with Meta, as well as Eric Harrison, Signature Development Group, and Solon Stewart Rose is here as well for the East and West campuses. We don't have a formal presentation but are available to you if you have any questions. And thank you again for having us tonight.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? Commissioner Farrick?
It's not a clarifying question, but I just wanted to, you know, for full disclosure, I serve on some boards with members of the Meta team that represent the project, so Juan specifically. And then, you know, I have a similar job to Juan's, and so we see each other quite a bit. So I just wanted to let you know. But don't worry, I have no financial relationship with the company, and I believe I can adjudicate on this fairly.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick, for sharing that. Any other clarifying questions or statements before Commissioner Barnes?
For my edification, what are the roles of the four individuals, be it between Meta, the gentlemen that are on the screen? Like who does what?
Thank you. Just for clarification. So Juan Salazar with Meta, Government and Community Affairs, Eric Harrison, Signature Development, one of the development leads, and Solon Stewart Rose is on the development team for the East and West campuses.
For Signature?
No, for, for Meta.
For Meta.
Meta employee, exactly. Juan and Solon are with Meta, and Eric Harrison and I are here tonight on behalf of Signature and Willow Village.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Commissioner Silverstein?
I just have a quick disclosure that I used to work at Meta, which was formerly known as Facebook. And I worked in both the original East Campus as well as the West Campus, Building 20. But that was seven, almost eight years ago, and I have not kind of worked or interacted with those campuses since.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So let's go ahead and open public comment for this item to speak. And I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Doe. Just as a reminder, you're welcome to speak on this comment, sorry, public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon on Zoom or by pressing star nine if calling by phone. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. As of right now, I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards.
Thank you. Let's give it a moment. And how about now? Any hands raised?
I can confirm that I have not received any comment cards or, and have not seen any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Let's close public comment then and bring it back to the commission for any discussion and questions. And ultimately, two motions for this, for these two items. Would anyone like to start? Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, thank you. Well, we only have one sort of flag on these reviews, so I might as well bring it forward and ask. So any subcontracts that were over $5 million were to be defined and assist Menlo Park in collecting its share of sales tax or implied sales tax, I believe, is what it works out to. It turned out it was not possible for the Citizen M contractor to define these before this hearing. I did want to ask staff, if I may, was there not a schedule of values available with the Citizen M Hotel construction contract?
Great question. Appreciate it. Not that I am from staff aware of, in terms of things that were submitted to the city during the building permit review, we did not receive a schedule of values.
If it's of any assistance, I don't believe there are any significant construction contracts that do not have a schedule of values that is required, a required submittal before even excavation begins. So that should be readily available, and it would be in the binder of every manager involved in the Citizen M project. So that could help ascertain the question about the contract size. It's not direct for certain kind of thing, but it certainly helps point the way. I also wanted to ask, when it comes to conformance with the development agreements, the trip cap was one of the most significant aspects of the discussions over the last, well, 10 years now. The way in which the trip cap is defined, it is not completely rigid. Fortunately, it does not say a total of 4,322 cars is the maximum for every morning, for example. But it does say how many cars are the cap, and it allows for a certain number of days for that cap to be exceeded, and I believe by a certain number of cars. Was that submitted as part of the annual review for this, for this term?
Yes, that's correct. So we do have that information. As the staff report mentions, there were no trip cap violations for the West Campus during these review periods. There was one instance in 2023 for the East Campus, and that was associated with a valid event exclusion and was reviewed by our Transportation Division. As Commissioner Riggs, you mentioned, there are a number of event exclusions that are allowed per year. I believe the number is 12 on a rolling basis, with three also additional kind of one-off exclusions that could be applied. So 15 total for the East and West Campus. And as I mentioned, there was one instance in 2023 during an event that exceeded the trip cap.
All right.
So below the threshold.
Thank you very much. And just knowing the challenge that Meta is under for parking and always has been since the first year of occupancy, I just want to note that is a significant accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Vice Chair Schindler?
Thank you, Chair Doe. I have a couple of just small questions, but thematically they are aligned with questions that Commissioner Riggs was asking, so I may build upon those. The first was that I think, I think it's a question to the applicant, but I'm not certain. The idea of recalibrating for trip caps, trip cap counting was introduced in the staff report. The idea that the reliability of that daily tracking needs to be recalibrated, and that that is something, I think, for both the East and the West Campus, and that that is something that is being done soon, now that we are both back to normal occupancy levels post-pandemic. So I wanted to understand just approximately the time horizon for that. And also, just at a very high level, if you could describe what recalibration means in this, in this context. And I, not quite, apologies, I'm not quite sure which of the members of the applicant team are best situated to answer this. So I will throw it out and let you guys steer here.
So through the chair, if I may, I can probably take some of the calibration component.
Okay, great. Thank you.
In regard to timing, I can also actually just take that. I know that Meta has reached out to our transportation team, specifically our senior transportation engineer, Kristi Anne Choi, to kind of start that process of scheduling the recalibration. I don't know the exact date and time, but it would be in the near future. But I'll look to Meta to confirm that or provide additional information if needed. With regard to the calibration, it's really about a reliance or sensitivity. So it's a number of things that go into it. So it's checking the equipment itself, but it's also surveying mode share and to ensure that the trip cap is, is, or the counting is being done to exclude trips that aren't actually campus-related trips. So there are trips that go to the Bay Trail on the East Campus, and those are netted out. And so it's, it's, it's doing a survey to understand the typical operations that occur that are outside of Meta's operations. There's also pass-through trips. So there are folks that do use the campus sometimes as a cut-through. So it's excluding those trips based on surveyed information. And then there's also managing the potential for ride share pickup and drop off. And then also, that are counted, but that do make multiple stops through campuses. And so those get counted at the appropriate numbers, not every time. Because if a trip comes into the community, stops at the East, goes to the West, that's two trips, not four trips. It's kind of part of that factor. So it's more of a survey to understand those operations that are outside of the typical to and from trips to the site. So hopefully that helps explain what the kind of sensitivity or reliability factor is. We call it calibration too, but any of those three words is kind of interchangeably used between transportation and planning for that.
Yeah, thanks, Kyle. Maybe I'll weigh in. We have been doing some of these calibration studies currently. There's been cameras up that have been, you know, double-checking the, the counting of all the cars coming into the campus. So I would say that's ongoing.
Thank you for that additional detail, both in the terms of the timing and the technique. I think, as Commissioner Riggs pointed out, the trip caps were an important part of this development and will continue to be an important part of large-scale development that happens in the city. So the more we know and the better we understand it, the better we can do our job and that we're doing here tonight. I also had a question about the one-flagged development requirement as it related to the hotel. So my question, again, I believe this is to staff, is with regard to the final inspections and approvals for the hotel, will those inspections and final approvals be dependent upon gathering the remaining outstanding information and the recording of the, you know, the construction materials and the contracts as originally required for purposes of recognizing the sales tax?
No, staff's not, would not withhold a final inspection due to a potential lack of submittal of information showing compliance. Or as the staff report identifies, if this item is the singular non-compliant, it doesn't necessarily, to staff's perspective, rise to, you know, a, a lack of good faith in terms of compliance with the DA. in terms of compliance with the DAs overall, development agreements, excuse me, overall for the campuses. But no, staff would not withhold a final inspection due to the lack of information on the sales tax for large construction contracts. So, thanks.
Thank you, appreciate that. And that's really my final question. In my, in my perspect, in reading through this and understanding the large scope and the myriad dozens and dozens of requirements associated with each of these development agreements, I think staff's recommendation that the two, Meta and then, well, I'm trying to remember again. Yeah, Peninsula Innovation Partners, right, are two entities have definitely, in totality, demonstrated good-faith compliance, in my opinion, with the development agreement. So I will be supporting them.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. Any other, Commissioner Silverstein?
Yeah, I have a question about the grocery store provisions. There's a completed provision to construct a grocery store, and then a second one to subsidize rent for said grocery store for a period of two to five years. My question is, after that five-year period, if the subsidy is no longer required, is the grocery store also no longer required? Or is that grocery store cap to stay? Or what is the condition on having a grocery store in their facility? And does that extend beyond five years? Or they could have any form of tenant in that location?
It's a good question. I'll let the applicant start, and then I'll add if needed.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. Yeah, the obligation is to construct, so that is all of the tenant improvements, 38,000 square foot full-service grocery store, in addition to rent subsidies for that period of time. That space, you know, is designated for, you know, a grocery store. So our obligation to subsidize after that period of time, it's completed, but that space will remain, you know, commercial and grocery store and, you know, and our grocer. And we've had strong interest, which is great. And so we're eager to continue to move forward.
Yeah, so the only thing that for staff to add is, yes, thank you, Mr. Morley. The space would be constructed for a grocery store. It would, for all intents and purposes, be used for a grocery store. There are no operating covenants on the project, so, you know, the grocery store could move in and out. The goal through the development agreement between the city and the applicant is to provide the incentive, the space, the development, the TIs, and then that subsidy to get a grocery store up and running for the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. Anyone? Commissioner Farrick.
Oh, thank, excuse me, thank you. First, I'll start with a comment, and then I do have one kind of very specific, in-the-weeds question. Just appreciate the format of this. It's like really interesting to read, and it feels like it sort of reflects the values, particularly at the time when these were created. And I hope it's actually served Meta well, because I think it does bolster their local reputation and regional as well. A few of the items I thought were particularly great, that not only have they been completed, but some completed well ahead of the milestones, trip caps, community fund, the internship program for your local youth, local jobs and career development. The list goes on. And I have one very specific question. I'm not sure who I should field it to, but I noticed that local purchasing is going down year-over-year from 30 to 20 to 10 local businesses being used. It's 18.2 in the, I think it's in the second set of documents. And I guess the question is, is there a mechanism to, like, what are the challenges with keeping up local procurement, you know, to Meta? And then if that's, if there's a challenge that we can help with? Or I'm just curious about it. It's not like I'm, you know, it's not a deal breaker. I just want to, I'm just curious and to see if there's a way to boost that back up. Anyone?
I can weigh in, and then I'll kind of turn it over to Juan. So we do a couple of things to ensure that we're, you know, supporting the local businesses. So everything from our kind of local vendors, you know, purchasing supplies, or kind of going to local restaurants, you know, is something that we try to encourage throughout. I think the kind of minor dip that you're seeing in, you know, total number of restaurants, really, I think, is the big thing, was a bit of the decrease in the maybe variety of meals that were through our community food program. So I think previous times, we'd use maybe 30 different restaurants, and that kind of has gone down a bit in terms of the total number of restaurants that are kind of part of those programs. And Juan, if you want to add anything else.
Yeah, I think the other item that I would add is that, I think prior to the pandemic, one of the things that we had, we had a robust sourcing program primarily in terms of catering and having different teams order in in terms of being able to cater some of their events and so forth. A lot of small businesses were actually used for those purposes. I think now, sort of as you transition in terms of going back to the office, I think we're slowly starting to be able to sort of rev back up to that. So it wasn't until last year that we did go ahead and require folks to come back to the office three days a week. So our hope is that, I think, as we sort of have more in-office time, it'll lead to us actually having stronger connections, particularly in terms of being able to source from local restaurants.
Great, thank you. And I guess I'm curious, from the city's perspective, with us not really having a local chamber of commerce anymore, is there a mechanism that the city can provide through economic development or something like that that helps connect local businesses to companies like Meta?
We can certainly look into it. It's a great suggestion. We can take that input and work with our Economic Development Manager to see if there's something we can do. Thanks.
Thanks.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Farrick. So I'll just add just one more comment. I did have a question for staff before the meeting. And I said, what, I think the East and West and expansion campuses, DA, development agreements terminate in 2026. And I guess I was curious, like, what happens? And basically, I understand that these programs don't stop, but it continues at the discretion of Meta. So I just wanted to say I appreciate, well, I'll go back to what Ms. Prada you said about the grocery store. That's about setting up the incentives and kind of setting up the framework. But I believe the term you used in that instance was operating covenant, that things are maybe not guaranteed or promised in perpetuity. But I do appreciate the patterns for community support and engagement in local businesses and managing vehicular trips that these development agreements set up. So I just want to express appreciation for city staff and all the work that goes into working with the, you know, working to make that happen. And other than that, I am happy to support staff's recommendation to approve the two, I forget the term, but...
Through the chair, maybe Ms. Begin could project on the screen the F2 and F3. That might be helpful to see and read back.
Yes, thank you, yes. And again, not to cut short any discussion or questions, if any other thoughts arise to other commissioners. But just a reminder, there's two separate motions, two votes, to be made if anyone is ready at any point. Consider and adopt a resolution to determine Meta has demonstrated good-faith compliance with the terms of the development agreements for 2021, 2022, and 2023 for the East, West, and campus expansion projects. Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to move that we adopt the resolution regarding good-faith efforts. And I would just like to take a second to add specifically that while it was mentioned that Meta contributed $1 million toward the Dunbarton Bridge transportation study, that Meta, in fact, contributed a great deal more than that. And that company may be in a bit of a pause regarding their support for the project. They may not be able to continue to support the project, given the political atmosphere. But I don't want it to go unsaid that, at least from my perspective, the city gained a great deal from the effort and contribution of Meta, a very significant contribution. And perhaps we will visit that information in the future. So yes, I'd like to move the approval.
Thank you for both things, Commissioner Riggs. And first, from Commissioner Riggs, would anyone like, Commissioner Farrick?
I'll second.
And the second from Commissioner Farrick. So we'll go ahead and vote on...
Just to clarify, Chair Doe, this is Attachment A, F2, the East, West, and Campus Expansion DAs. We'll do a second motion, second for F3.
Thank you, thank you. So can we just pull up that slide just one more time as we're just voting? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Prada. Commissioner Barnes.
Yes, thank you. So this, there's clearly a lot of work and a lot of benefit to the community by having these developments in our community. So I want to acknowledge that, the applicant, for doing it. And, you know, these were responsibilities willingly taken on by the applicant in order to facilitate the development of their project. So it benefits the community, it benefits the applicant, it benefits people who aren't directly in that community but are part of Menlo Park writ large. So acknowledging that. I do have a question, and it relates to Attachment T. And for me, at least, and this goes, this goes back to the original Connect Menlo and those different expansion phases, and then through to Willow Village. Much of what I liked or felt invested in is the job training aspects of it. I mean, we can always pour concrete, but at the same time, training up and providing the ability for folks to scale themselves up and out, or to whatever it is they want to scale up, is a really critical part of this process. So, for instance, if I look at Attachment T and I look at the development agreement, number 5.1.G. In terms of outcomes, how are the, how are the outcomes reported out? For instance, for Job Train? And did I miss that? Or how would I assess success or failure or outcomes for this particular development agreement item? You know, and I'll ask that through the chair to the applicant.
So maybe through the chair before the applicant chimes in. So the motion in the second is related to F2. This question is for the Willow Village Job Train funding. However, it is a continuation of items that Meta had or was or is continuing to engage in through the East and West Campus DA. So with that, I think we can discuss this item right now, because it does relate to the West Campus. So I might look to the applicant to identify any of the outcomes from their work with Job Train. But I just wanted to make that for clarification first.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Barnes, thank you for the question. So we've had longstanding partnership with Job Train, going back to when we first moved to Menlo Park, I believe, in 2012. As mentioned, this has been included in some of our initial development agreements, and it's continued into our Willow Village Development Agreement. So historically, what we've done is, the way that we've measured the success has been through the number of folks trained. So I don't have that number in front of me, to be honest with you. I think we can follow up with you. But we have had a lot of success primarily in terms of making sure that folks that are trained, Job Train provides with a report that we'd be happy to actually provide to you and the rest of the commission, folks that are, go through their trades training, which is what we've emphasized through some of the funding that we provided, just in terms of the work that we've done with them. So trades has been one. We've previously supported some programs around culinary, but we found that their trade training has been some of the strongest programming that they provide. Separate from Job Train, and this actually may be, this is another initiative that we've run, is a partnership with an organization called Year Up. So Year Up trains youth 18 to 30. So what we did in the partnership that we've had with them, and where we also included in our Willow Village Development Agreement, is to go ahead and train them on our campus, where they would have a designated site. So through a period of about, I think it was scheduled to be three years, they'd be able to train about 250 local youth in careers at Meta, with the idea that they'd do a six-month training that would lead to a six-month internship with the possibility for them to get placed. So we can also go ahead and provide kind of a recap in terms of the success that we saw through that program, too.
I appreciate that. I think, you know, maybe because this is so close to home, and we've become a nerd to the Meta being in our backyard, there are very few opportunities that we can take. You know, the Peninsula, and certainly, you know, we take the state of California, where you've had an owner-usual like Meta come in and be largely economically insensitive to the development. Insensitive being, this is not a spec build. These were, the facilities were built, the community benefits that were provided were all, I think, above and beyond what you see virtually anywhere else. Because when you're building, in many instances, you don't necessarily know who your tenant's going to be. Or if you do, you've got shorter-term leases associated with it. There's different barriers to really going deep and providing benefits to the community. And I think a lot of what was done, based on the other development agreements that I see in other jurisdictions, this development agreement, both by its scope and by the variety of items that are addressed in here, I think there's a lot to be learned here. And I would hope that some of the best practices associated with some of the Job Train activities, some of the skilling up of local residents in Bellhaven, we take that work product. And my question was, one, A, I'm curious about some of the outcomes, and B, how those outcomes get reported out. I think a really, is a really important piece of this, because so much innovative things were done here, and we can use that in other places. Because community benefits, it's one thing, again, to pour concrete as a community benefit. It's another thing to really dig into a specific community and provide the ability for the members of those communities to rise up with, as part of the amenities that are provided. And I am as much an advocate for some of the soft community benefit things as I am for, you know, you know, building a building or widening highways. So I asked that question, one, because I am very curious, and two, I hope that those best practices that you've been learning over time, that information gets disseminated to entities that can use that and can see how, you know, what you learned in terms of successes, what you learned in terms of failures, what you learned in terms of, you know, what can be replicated elsewhere. Because very valuable lessons. And, you know, building this here in Menlo Park has been, I think, incredibly unique for our community. And again, we've become used to it being in our backyard. But this is not the quality of... the quality of construction and development and design and place-making and community engagement. And, and the funds poured into this is something that you rarely see in other developments. So with that, I'll end my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes, for your, for your comments. Commissioner Silverstein?
Can I ask one more clarifying question before we vote? I noticed that a number of these development agreement items are very long in terms of length. You know, one example has a recurring public benefits payment for 10 years. Just a clarification question, are any of these ever inflation-adjusted? Or are they always just fixed at whatever was decided at the point in time?
Yeah, thank you, good question. Yeah, a number of them are adjusted based on Consumer Price Index, effectively inflation, but CPI is typically used. Some of them reset or adjust at defined increments. Like, I think five years is a typical one that you'll see, three to five years, you'll see a jump or a change in, in the payment. Some are more annual adjustments, but a number of them are set for a fixed period and then adjust and then are set for another fixed period.
Great, thank you for that question. Any other questions or comments? And just as a reminder, we do have a first from Commissioner Riggs and a second from Commissioner Farrick to approve the, if you could pull up the slide one more time, Ms. Began, because I think we are ready to vote, just want to make sure everyone's clear on what we're voting for, voting on.
Through the chair, I think it could be simplified as adopt the resolution as recommended by staff in Attachment A.
Yes, adopt, thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and move, move to a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
I saw you avoiding restating what Mr. Prada said. So what he said, I will say yes to what Mr. Prada said and almost said by Chair Doe and thank you, I'm a yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
I am also a yes, and so the motion passes. So the other item that we are being asked to vote on, F3, is adopting a resolution to determine that Peninsula Innovation Partners has demonstrated a good faith compliance with the development agreement for the 2023 annual review period. And this is for the Willow Village mixed-use master plan project. I believe our discussion this whole time has been for, for both items, but feel free to make a motion, but if anyone has additional questions or comments for this one, I think now would be the time to do so. Any other? If not, looking for a motion, if anyone would. Commissioner Farrick?
Thank you. I will be delighted to make the motion to approve, sorry, Mr. Prada, I forgot the words you wanted us to use to make it simple. It's easier for me to read off the screen if it's okay with everybody.
That's fine, or adopt, approve the resolution or adopt the resolution in Attachment B.
Yes, I would, I move to adopt the resolution in Attachment B to determine Peninsula Innovation Partners LLC has demonstrated good faith compliance with the terms of development agreement for the 2023 annual review period for Willow Village mixed-use master plan project.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. A first, thank you. Vice Chair Schindler?
I will second that.
And a second from Vice Chair Schindler. All right, so it looks like we are ready to vote on the resolution as recommended by staff in Attachment B. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That is seven yeses and the motion passes. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate the time today.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Just thank Commissioner Riggs and Commissioner Barnes. We have been collaborating with this commission for many, many years and I just wanted to thank you for your service and your thoughtful and considered review and on behalf of Meta, a signature and the Willow Village team, just wanted to thank you very much.
Yes, thank, thank you, thank you. All right, that is, brings us to the close of our public hearing tonight and brings us to G informational items. Mr. Prada?
Yes, thank you, Chair Doe. So the next planning commission meeting is next Monday, so one week away. It is a short agenda, there's a single-family home and use permit, and then also the vice chair and chair selection. We'll be on that meeting along with the first meeting for two new commissioners who will be taking over for Commissioner Riggs and Barnes. So I'll just use this as a quick plug to thank you again for your service. We really appreciate it on behalf of staff and the broader community development and city. We really appreciate your service to the community. So thanks again, and that concludes my updates.
Thank you. Any other questions? No?
Please.
Commissioner Riggs?
I was afraid you weren't going to say my name. Sorry, Commissioner, but it is 8:20 and you are no longer Commissioner. I, I just want to take the opportunity to answer a question. We cannot have a debate about something that is on a, or even a discussion about something that's not on the agenda. But I believe it was Commissioner Silverstein asked about substandard lots and whether anything could be done to simplify the process and maybe remove some applications from our many agenda. And I'll say that the simple answer is design guidelines. And we have known this for 20, 21, 22 years, possibly longer. But when and if we have design guidelines for use permit applications, we would in effect not have to have use permit applications because at that point, and probably only at that point, would city council consider relaxing the rules about what has to come to planning commission. So it continues to be the same old issue. It's very hard to do design guidelines as a project. However, design guidelines exist among several cities on the peninsula that are waiting there for us to look at and edit if anyone wants to take on the task. So I couldn't resist that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Barnes?
And I would like to say thank you to the community for allowing me to be on the commission for eight years. I can definitively say that the arc of my curmudgeon-ness has increased as I've neared year eight. I was an eager beaver at the beginning and I was doing all my work and I think, I think I'm just happy to have been here for as long as I did. I think some of the crowning achievements were getting the Connect Menlo through the process and I'm quite proud of that in bringing the city, I think, into the, you know, 2020s. And I know that, I know that we're in good hands going forward. So thank you to everyone, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. I, I served kind of at the tail end of your eight years and I didn't notice any curmudgeon-liness. Oh, well, there you go. But, but thank, thank you both. This meeting is adjourned.